Doug, for we're going to do our board ethics training and our open public meeting training.
Yay!
Okay, so am I running this? Or, yeah, okay, I will. Um, this is not it. Okay, so I just wanted to emphasize once again that the board in, um, in your policies, in section two of our board policies, uh, it lists what the board's, um, commitments are and what its ethical obligations are, okay? Let me just touch on a couple. Um, the first is a conflict of interest. If board members have, um, uh, any type of business activities that furnishes goods to the district or otherwise does business with the district or any transactions made with the district, the board must disclose their relationship with that, um, that business entity, whether it's your own business entity, one that you associate with in some way if you're on a board. We've even, uh, extended that to mean if you're employed by a business entity, okay? And we go through a process of just disclosing what those potential conflicts are. We have a process for reviewing those potential conflicts and we maintain those conflicts of interest form, um, in case anybody inquires. I personally have a conflict of interest form filled out that's on file, just so you know. And if any of you do business that in some way touches on the district, please do the same, okay? That's the first thing. Confidentiality. Just remember as board members, you come in contact with a lot of confidential information. Um, not the least of which is, uh, information that's shared during an executive session, okay? But that's not all. Other information that's shared about, uh, individual members of our, of our, uh, school communities, okay? Or, um, policies, procedures, that, that sort of thing that might be in, in, uh, in process, for example. There's lots of examples that I can give, but confidential information is confidential. First and foremost, that's student confidentiality, but that also includes employee confidentiality and confidentiality, um, regarding business information that we share regularly so that we can conduct our business. So be very careful with, with confidential information and please be circumspect in how you treat it. Uh, board member code of conduct. There are, um, rules and regulations that, um, govern teachers, that govern district employees. We have said that those same, um, uh, those same codes of conduct also apply to board members. If you have any questions about where you can find those, uh, in either board policy or in administrative code, please don't hesitate to ask me, but, um, those things are binding on board members as well, okay? On the back side of that page that I, that I gave to you are a list of board ethics. Those are extrapolated from our policies and also, uh, included in your board handbook. If you have any questions about those ethical matters, please don't hesitate to ask me about those. Are there any questions with relation to your board ethics? Let me mention just one other three, one other thing, that the, these things are not basic, they're not based in ethical obligations, but the board has also made commitments and I want to remind you of those. And the three main commitments that we've made, you might, um, be very familiar with, but we must promote educational growth, we must promote learning and working environment free of harassment, and we must promote transparency and compliance with, um, uh, with, um, laws of the state and laws, uh, and, and federal laws as well. So those are our, um, our basic commitments and our ethics. If you don't have any other questions on those, then I will switch over to, I guess I should have done that. That's the back page where those are your board ethics and you're welcome to peruse those. Those are in the materials. All right, help me out of here. I knew that was going to happen. I think I closed you out of the whole thing. I hate. Apple computers. It is to ask them. Oh, you're kidding me. All right, I'm going to get started. Open Public Meetings Act. We're very well aware of the Open Public Meetings Act. All of you have been through my trainings in the past. As Luke is getting this, um, pulled up, you have it, uh, in your materials as well. I'll refer you to the first, or excuse me, the second slide, just to remind you of the intent of the, of OPMA, and I'll refer to it as OPMA. That's the Open Public Meeting, Open Public Meetings Act. It ensures that board business will be conducted and actions taken by the board, uh, in the open, essentially that we, we're transparent with our business, okay? And, um, pursuant to that, you have an annual OPMA training. That's what we're going through right now. As a reminder, meetings, um, OPMA applies to board meetings. And what a meeting is, is a gathering of a quorum of board members to discuss or receive public comment about or act upon matters over which the board has jurisdiction or advisory power. So you are delegated power from the state through statute from the USBE. Anytime that you are conducting business under that authority, it is required to be in an open meeting unless it's not, right? And a meeting, thank you from the background. A meeting, let me, so i- if there are certain circumstances that do, that do not constitute a meeting, these things do not constitute a meeting. If no funds are being expended, if the discussion is only for the purpose of administrative, administrative or operational matters where nor, no formal actions are taken and/or constitute a chance of social gathering. If you meet each other at the, at the, um, at the local Smith's and there happen to be four of you, it's not a board meeting, okay? Um, if you're discussing things of basic operations or, um, of the district or we're discussing operational matters, not a board meeting. If you're not expending money, not a board meeting. Everything else, it is a board meeting if there's four of you there. You have to provide notice if you're going to have a board meeting. That notice has to be 24 hours in advance, um, unless it doesn't. Uh, with a majority vote, the board can convene an emergency meeting without 24 hours' notice, but again, it must be urgent in nature, okay? I'm on slide six if you're following along. Agenda items. We create an agenda. It's, uh, the agenda, um, is created pursuant to, um, the information in your board handbook. I'm on six, there you go. We can only take action on matters that have been noticed on the agenda. We will not take notice on, um, matters that aren't, um, noticed on the agenda. If a public member during public comment brings up something that is, um, that is not on the agenda, the board can discuss it, they just can't take action upon it. Does that make sense? Any questions so far? Okay, let's talk about public participation. We do allow public participation. A meeting is open to the public, again, unless it is closed. So we do have closed meetings. We just had one. All other meetings, um, that are noticed by the board must be open to the public and we generally allow public comment. Patrons, um, sign up in advance. They do that through our communications office. Public, um, comment is required in certain meetings. Those are meetings that are hearings or meetings in which, um, we are discussing boundary closures or school closures, or, excuse me, boundary changes or school closures or bond ballot measures, okay? If members of the public disrupt an open meeting, they will be asked to leave and, um, ultimately could be charged with a class B misdemeanor if they don't comply. Minutes in recording, those are done by Stacy. She does a wonderful job.
Hey Doug, really quick. It says boards on agenda items. Board may discuss an item raised by the public not listed on the agenda but cannot take final action. Can you just clarify what that means for sure?
Sure. So let's just say someone from the public has signed up to, to, um, for public comment and they get up and they discuss something that is, it's important and the board would love to, to discuss it. They may have a short discussion or have a discussion. I'm not going to dictate how long it is. They may have a discussion about that, that particular matter that the, that the public, uh, that it came up in public comment. What they can't do is take any action related to that matter, to that issue.
So how do we have the discussion if it's not an agenda item?
If somebody brings it up spontaneously.
The agenda item is the public comment and it was brought up as part of the public comments.
I'm sorry. I, I apologize. So i- it, you can only take action on action items or, or, um, items that have been listed on the agenda as items that will be acted upon during the meeting, okay? So if someone from the public is speaking on a hypothetical matter that we, we don't have as an action item, we don't have as a, as a consent agenda item, et cetera, it is not considered to be on the agenda. Does that make sense?
You could respond to the patron.
Yeah.
You just wouldn't be able to take any formal action with their request.
But typically that's why we do, I mean, we listen to public comment and a lot of times it'll be like, hey, let's put you in contact with the right person type of deal, but it doesn't open up the forum. We typically just, we, we take that feedback and we follow through with it, but not right at that minute in an open discussion.
And I'm only saying that, that's excellent. That's excellent clarification. I'm only saying that it wouldn't be a violation of the Open and Public Meetings Act if you discussed it but didn't take a formal action on it.
Gotcha. So if we asked a follow-up question from them or just said, hey, that's an interesting point or whatever, so as long as we're, okay, thank you.
Exactly.
Sorry, to be clear, you're saying even if we as a board had a discussion about it, it's not a violation?
That's correct.
And I mean more than just asking a follow-up question.
Yeah. So as a, as a best practice, I think the board has, has, um, in the past prefers to kind of have information in front of them. So if something is spontaneously brought up during board meeting, rather than just have a spontaneous conversation, it's likely better to circle back, put an agenda item on the agenda and then have a formal conversation as a board. That's a best practice. That's not a, that, that, that really has nothing to do with, um, uh, OPMA. That's discussed in your board handbook.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, so public participation, uh, I think we've killed that one. Again, Stacy takes minutes and keeps recordings. Uh, we have to post those, uh, to the public website, um, to, uh, to utah.gov within three days and we have to, um, uh, make our draft minutes available within 30 days and then post them after we voted on them within three days. Electronic meetings, we can convene electronic meetings if that is, um, desired. Recognize that an electronic meeting is not someone phoning in and I think I, it still says telephone on my, oh. How do I answer?
Don't touch anything Doug.
Cover down the bottom.
Down, down? All right, electronic meetings, we can have electronic meetings. If someone is participating via telephone or via Zoom or via, um, some other remote location, that is not considered an electronic meeting. An electronic meeting is considered when we're all, um, participating electronically, but except for one person who would be at an anchor location like the district, um, who is, um, facilitating the meeting, okay? Those are typically held or contemplated in, in, um, circumstances where you might have an emergency or, um, and you just simply can't gather as a, as a body.
That was what we ended up doing during COVID for those on the board. So we were a hundred percent electronic on that.
Yep.
But the anchor location was somebody was still here.
That's right.
Running the show, so has to be pretty severe.
Yeah.
Emergency to do that.
Yeah. Okay. I know this has all been very stressful, so once again, just ask you to take a breath. This, by the way, is not a district-approved template for, um, for, uh, PowerPoint presentations, but I've asked for special dispensation just so that you can, you can feel at ease while we're having this conversation, okay? All right, closed meetings. We just had a closed meeting. Closed meetings can be for the following purposes. For an individual's character, competence, or health, pending or imminent litigation, matters of acquisition or sale of real property, deployment of security systems, investigations of alleged criminal conduct, certain deliberate deliberations and decision-making involving procurement. Closed meetings require a two-thirds vote. We just went through this. Uh, they shall be announced. Information gathering and final action cannot be, um, uh, cannot happen during a closed meeting. If you're going to take action, you must open the meeting back up, deliberate, and then take action. Closed meetings, um, uh, the board can decide who attends those closed meetings, um, and a recording must be kept of the closed meetings except in the two circumstances where you're discussing, uh, character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual or security systems. Otherwise, they must be recorded. If you don't want to record those two, then we need to file an affidavit that the, um, uh, that the, uh, meeting did not discuss anything beyond what was, um, uh, what was called for, uh, in the motion, okay? Here's just some quick, uh, reminders about common mistakes. Sorry, oh, this is for relax. Okay, moving on. Common mistakes, um, conference calls sometimes have more than four people on them. Be careful that you're not constituting a quorum and discussing, um, uh, business that would constitute a meeting. Failing to cite reasons for a closed meeting, um, I'll make sure you always do that and so does Todd. Uh, disclose information learned at a closed meeting. Just be really careful, uh, um, with that information. Please do not discuss it outside of, um, the context of a closed meeting itself. Again, penalties, um, the, uh, final actions can be voided and, um, serious violations can result in a class B, um, misdemeanor. That's it. Questions? No questions, I'll...
Want to know if that's in our budget?
Oh, it's in Ben's budget apparently. He gets to go to beautiful places like this, um, from time to time.
Just that picture. That's the only thing I have that's in my budget.
Thanks Doug, that was thrilling. Well done.
What was your best time?
Was it?
And it was a great ski picture of you. All right, sorry, we're, we're going to move on to our capital plan update, sorry. And turn the time over to Todd. Although we have some guests here, right?
Yes, we have Brian joining me. He's there to make sure that I don't lie, cheat, or misrepresent the district. No. No, it's good to, to have a chance to talk about the capital plan. I'm going to jump back a little bit in time. We're going to go back to 2015, 2016 for just a minute or two and just get our, uh, feet under us to understand what it was the district had planned to do. Uh, I've been asked to assess whether that plan is still operational as we move forward and what improvements, uh, might be available as we look at the capital needs moving forward. So there's our agenda. So we'll try and cover all those bases today and I'm told I have to do it in 20 minutes. So where we were, so back, uh, a decade ago almost, uh, we were looking at the facility needs of the district and we had a third party come and assess each of our facilities and assign it a facility, uh, index or facility condition index. Uh, the board went through and reviewed all of that material and we put buildings in a rank order, if you will, of their conditions and created several phases of buildings that needed attention. So we had phase one, two, and three. The capital plan that was put together back in 2015, 16, and then bonded for in 2017 is primarily based on this, uh, assessment of where those, uh, facility conditions were. We then also talked about life cycle of buildings. How often should we be visiting a building? Should they be remodeled at certain junctures or do we just write them into the ground and replace them when they get to the end? What's the, the best approach? And at the time, the district had adopted a, a life cycle approach that has one remodel on the way to a rebuild. So again, that's the, the concepts that were put together by the board at that time. With all of that in hand, we then had to ask the question, well, how do we pay for this? So as we know what the conditions are, we know how we want to get through those conditions, how do we pay? At the time, there was opportunity to just go to bond. Uh, we could also have just raised the capital levy or a combination which was ended up called a hybrid. In this case, the idea was to bond for a number of the facilities and then move into what's called a pay-as-you-go or pay-to-go, uh, funding process, uh, which would take proceeds of the district into the future to manage the out, uh, outlying buildings and capital needs as we move forward. LYRB was, is even today still our financial advisor, but they went through and looked at that idea. This, this chart's probably one of the more important charts because it lays the foundation of how, how we finance our schools' construction. If you look here, you'll see a gray line that jumps up and then runs kind of northeast across the page there. That's the revenue stream. That's the idea of how we're financing. The bars represent, uh, bond commitments or bond payments. Uh, if you look at that 23 or the 22 year, you'll see that the bars start to drop so that as we satisfy bond commitments and pay off our bonds, the strategy was to take that revenue and transfer it from the debt service fund into the capital fund so that those dollars could be used moving forward. So essentially at that $60 million level, as you look on the chart, that would be the new funding bar for the district moving into the future. So as we satisfy our debt, we'll have more money, uh, in out years to pay for capital projects. The slope that you see in the bar running northeast is a second feature of the capital strategy, which was to freeze or to hold steady the combined rates of the debt service and the capital levy. So that's capturing assessment growth in the years as you move forward. And that's how you get the upward growth to, to compensate for additional costs into the future, escalating costs into the future. That's really your growth piece of money into the future is to, to hold those rates steady. Yes?
And when we move those to the capital levy from, from this model to the, the capital, that's what triggers a truth in taxation, even if we're not quote raising taxes for, for other things, that automatically triggers the truth in taxation, even though the tax itself isn't changing, it's just the location where we label it and where it's spent.
Correct.
Is that an accurate representation?
Under the certified, uh, tax rating process, the question is not what was your tax rate, it was what was your tax yield or what did you budget for that year? That stays level from one year to the next. If you change it, that triggers a tax increase and that's what essentially this is doing is we take the debt service. It would have been decreased, if you will. When we pay off a bond, we no longer need that revenue to pay the bond, but to hold on to that revenue, we would have to cause another levy to increase, which triggers the tax law.
Is there a question coming?
The reason we have a truth in taxation because it, sorry, I don't mean to push back, I just really don't like that explanation of it. It is a tax increase and that's why we have truth in taxation. The tax dollars increase and that's why we're having truth in taxation. Like individuals are paying more tax. Their, their property values go up and the rate would drop so that our dollars would stay the same, right? We were adding more dollars by freezing the rate and it is a tax increase. And so I, I just hate the...
Yes.
Hate the stronger, I'm sorry. I dislike when it's described as not a tax increase because it actually is in my mind. So I just wanted to throw my two cents on it.
No, and, and that's, that's fair. And that's how the law is written, it is in that context, is that any of that activity is a tax increase, so therefore is subject to truth in taxation. So thank you for, uh, calling that out. But again, this, this is kind of the crux of the model. So this says, this is the revenue source moving forward. If we don't have these types of measures in place, we have to rethink the capital plan moving forward. So this is what we're relying on, uh, in, at least into, this is a 40-year plan, so we still have another 30 years under this plan as we move forward. This was the voter information pamphlet, I just wanted to bring this out. Uh, this, this is the list of projects that we talked to our community about, uh, in that middle gray section. Uh, what is technically important on the voter information plant pamphlet is what's called the plan of finance and that is which projects are actually going to require a bond to pay for them. So in our, uh, notice, there were five projects, so out of some 30 projects, five of them technically were being funded with the bond proceeds in 2017. So these are projects that we have special obligation to the community to talk about to make sure that they're moving forward, that they get funded and the, the funds are appropriate for the, the nature of the project. That concept will become important here in a few minutes as we talk about how we move forward. Also on the bond proposition, we talked about, if you look on the right-hand side, what will the bonds do? We also had a commitment of improving all of our schools, not just the ones that were listed in the gray section, as well as looking at seismic improvement and security upgrades. So we had some other items that were also to be funded in this pay-as-you-go strategy that isn't strictly a new rebuild or a remodel. Along the way, we had, uh, changes to the plan of finance. This is allowed for under the law. You're allowed to change the plan of finance once in each meeting of the board. Uh, in this case, we, uh, had some timing opportunities with a prior bonds. We had bond authority of about $25 million that needed to be committed before it expired. And so the capital list that was presented was, uh, rearranged in order to accommodate that authority so that we would not lose the $25 million available to the district. And these were the schools that went through that process of, of amendment. So I was asked to do a, an analysis, was this plan feasible? And so what you're looking at here is the dark blue bars represents the revenue stream, the light blue are the project costs as they were understood at the time, and the gray line represents the fund balance or monies that are available for projects as we move forward. Looking at this, the, the plan in its long-term perspective was feasible or is feasible because we're still in it, but there was going to be some tight years. There were years when the fund balance was going to get really, really tight, if not negative. And so, uh, again, long-term perspective works. Short-term, we're in one of those times that this depicted that it was going to get very tight as we moved forward. Uh, at the time, uh, that we were looking at the projects, uh, we, we always do our best to estimate what those challenges will be, that we have costs accounted for, escalations built in, et cetera, but then real life happens. And so with every plan, you do have to visit it because life happens. In this case, there was exceptional years of construction inflation that impacted the district or other unseen events and there was value, there was engineering needs as we looked at the high schools. So these were things that happened to us. We, we had to, to deal with those. The time, uh, or at that time, the decision was to maintain the project list that we had, but since that was, costs were rising and revenues weren't coming in as strong, that caused the projects to shift out in their scheduled, uh, construction dates or, or begin times. And so this shifted time schedule is actually what we're operating under right now. So we still have the same financial strategy in place. We still have the buildings in their order as we designed, but we had to shift them out because the revenues and the costs were not going to align with each other. So that's decisions are, that have already been made. So where are we today? The Producer Price Index is what we're looking at here for the last 10 or so years. This is an indicator of what the costs are of construction as, as we look at, uh, planning and, and building and remodeling and, and et cetera. This is a growth chart, so this is showing year-over-year growth costs. You can see in 2021, uh, wasn't, wasn't, the growth wasn't terrible, but all of a sudden, we hit the pandemic time period and supply chain and other issues, labor costs were all starting to catch up and those costs went up significantly. You can see we went into double-digit periods, uh, but since that time, it has come back down. It's, we, coming back down doesn't mean that it costs less than it did before, just means that it's costing more at a slower rate or at a lower rate. Uh, so that, so we're in a period, if you look at 24, we're back into probably what's more of a traditional cost, uh, forecast of what those increase might be. However, we just went through an election and we have a new administration that's talking in terms of tariffs that could have impact on construction costs. So even though they're down low right now, we have to kind of keep in mind that we're in a new environment with a new administration that could impact, uh, construction costs. in a new environment with a new administration that could impact construction costs for our country and in Utah in particular. The next has to do with labor. So the first was the stuff that you build with. This is the people cost. Again, the you can see the same challenges in 21, 22, into 23, the the impact of the pandemic on labor and the costs of labor. Since then, it has come back down into probably more of a traditional level, but it's still growing. It's this is not cost savings. This is just the costs are growing at a lower rate. Again, we take this into account as we look at the costs moving forward. On the revenue side, revenues are actually coming in stronger. We have inflation, and so we also have money that is earning higher interest rates. We invest our money in the PTIF account with the state, and so we're able to capture those revenues. And so this is a positive scenario, more money than was anticipated. And we have built in, if you look in the first column to the left, that the assumed tax value increase would be about 3% a year. So we're just holding that steady, but it is a positive. If you look to the right-hand side, those are the dollars that will become available as we go into the future. Again, you can see a significant change as our bonds drops. So in the year 2031 into 2032, under the bond payment column, you can see a drop from a $21 million bond payment down to a $4 million bond payment. So that's where we capture money through this tax increase exercise, but it's money that's available for new construction, remodel, and other capital needs. So we're we're still in the tight period till we get to that point. And that's where the the trigger of this whole strategy works is that large increase are the dollars that we'll need moving into the future.
And Todd, you're saying that those funds that we captured that we can utilize later, we've invested those, and those investments are doing better than we predicted.
Correct.
Okay.
So, real quick question, just for clarification purpose. Available for capital outlay, that is per year, right? What we're getting per year?
Correct.
Okay. But that's currently just because of the nature of everything that's currently going mostly to Cypress and Skyline right now?
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this would be net of those costs in in the projections. So I dropped that into the same analysis. So now we're updating costs, updating cost forecasts, running inflation out at about a 6% rate instead of at a 20% rate. We're looking at the better returns on our accounts. Again, dark blue are the revenues coming in, light blue are the projected costs, and the gray line is our balance. And in this case, as we update it, we see that we don't have a tight year, per se. We have lots of projects and lots to do, but we don't put ourselves into a situation where we have a negative fund draw as we move forward. So just on the face of it, even with all of these updates, the the capital strategy that was adopted for 2017 is still viable. It has the revenues for new builds, for construction. We'll talk about our regular capital needs in a minute, but just as far as the plan was designed, it it seems to have the pieces in place to be able to move forward. Again, this is under the shifted model, so we already had to shift dates out. So that's what this is representing. Since I've come to the district, there's been concerns about the capital projects and the funding of the capital. So I just decided to write them down on a slide. Here's everything that has come across my desk with regards to the capital plan, from construction inflation to new legislation that impacts safety, to the tax conversation, and just looking at a page you go as a long-term strategy. These are all questions and concerns that have come and said, do they, what is the answer within our current capital plan? And starting to answer some of those questions, we can start to look at options. Do you know, do we do, do we really need to change anything with regards to the capital project? Is, can we live with it? It has its wrinkles and and warts, but it's workable in the main, and and so we keep going. Or do we need to look at some improvements? So I've listed some options here of things that we can look at as a board to improve upon the the capital plan as it stands right now. We'll talk about these each in a little more detail, but generally speaking, do we stay with the course? You know, do we just hold on as the first one? Do we start looking on the cost side of the plan? Do we revisit what we have in our buildings, how the buildings are built, where they are built, how often they're built? Do we need to revisit that side of the story? Do we look at our current project list and say, should things be reordered or should things be pulled off? Are are those projects that have developed in a way that are not necessarily in their place on the plan? And we can also look at raising more revenue. There are several scenarios that we can explore if we believe we need more revenue for the plan moving forward. Any question? I'm kind of rolling fast here. Any any concerns or comments to this point? We're good?
We'll take comments after.
All right. Yes.
We'll take comments after. Let's do questions.
Perfect. So the the first idea is here's our, these are the projects still yet to go as we move forward. You can also find these on the gsdfutures.org. We we keep that updated and so that people are able to see what the school projects are and our anticipated start dates for those projects. So here's the list. We can visit this. We can say, are there projects that should be addressed in a different order? We've also seen that with the improved revenue and cost picture, that that shift out of five to seven years, maybe some of the projects can simply be pulled forward. So it's not necessarily that they come off the list, but they might shuffle a little bit in their order because we're able to manage under a better financial structure at at this time. So there is that option of sliding some projects forward in time. Doesn't change the list, it just changes timing. And we can spend some time with the district's design guidelines and say, hey, this is how we want to build our schools into the future. We we need to be cost-conscious in a different way than we have been in the past, and so we need to revisit those those ideas. As we close schools and we start to look at how communities are served, we can ask other questions about, well, what should the capacity be of a school that remains in the community? Should it be serving more than 600 students? Should it be built to service more than 700 students or some other threshold? So it's a very conscious effort to look at how we build schools and what their service areas would be, as well as looking at consolidating schools so that there may be other schools on the projects that are unnecessary. So that's the the thinking there. Along the lines of closed schools, out of the last few years of closures, three of the schools are actually on the the list from 2017. And so that raises the question of, well, what do we do? Should those schools remain on the list even though we won't be occupying them? Or do they find another place on the capital structure? Maybe they move to the end of phase one, or they move out of phase one because we don't have an immediate need for that school? That then allows other schools to shift forward on the schedule. New revenue. We can always go to bond again. We can assess the schools and a proposition and bring that for the the public to review and see, but it is an option. It it's one on the table, so I have to call it out that we can go into debt servicing as we move forward. Another is to look at our capital levy and decide, we don't want a debt finance, but we want to use some of our tax capacity. So this is looking at the capital levy. And in the first chart to the left, the orange line at point 0003, that's the cap and statute. You cannot raise your tax levy higher than that. The blue line represents what our tax levy is right now. And so you can see there is some headroom in there. If you go to the chart to the right with the bars, the orange part of the bar represents how much additional tax revenue we could generate under the cap that's in place right now. And the chart at the bottom just simply says, we're about halfway through our levy. So you do want to be careful that you don't use all of the money all at once because there isn't more in the future. So you do want to make sure that you're not exhausting every revenue source available to you immediately. But there is headroom, so this is a possible strategy to fund certain projects. We can go into what's called lease revenue bonds. And so this is actually a tool that many districts will use when they get to the end of their bonded projects. In some cases, you'll have a a school district that their costs escalated enough that they ran out of money before they ran out of school. They still committed to the community, they were going to build it, but the costs were such that they couldn't manage it within the bond proceeds. So you'll see a district issue a lease revenue bond for the remaining part of costs of a building or buildings as a cleanup measure. The attractive part of the lease revenue bond is that you cannot raise taxes to pay the lease or the the bond payment on that revenue lease. You have to use existing revenues to use it, and that's why it's an attractive piece as a bond cleanup exercise because you're not raising more taxes, you're just getting into a debt service stream so that you can pay for the last of the projects.
So this is one that is more for a lower, like a lower, we're not going to do this for a high school. We're going to do this for a, like, the end of, like, the last little bit or or a small school, right?
Typically, it's the last little bit, but districts as of late have actually built full high schools, junior highs, elementaries with it. They've done $90 million projects. School district to the south of us is looking at one that's over $100 million. And so it's, it can be used that way. It can be structured that way. But again, it's, you're you're not raising taxes, you're using existing revenue streams to pay for this. This particular avenue is also being looked at, the the new administration. The municipal bond market or the municipal bonds that these fall under are being reviewed for their tax exempt status. And the administration that has come in does not look at that very favorably. And so the possibility of losing the tax exempt status could end in the next little while. So there's reviews of that right now taking place. But it's a tool, and losing the tax exempt status has the impact of making it more expensive to borrow the money.
Is that just kind of as a, we don't want you to do this, so we're going to put one more barrier there?
So this is, this is at the federal level. So the tax exempt status is a federal tax advantage. And there are parties at the federal level that see this as unfair competition or garnering benefits to the wrong populations. And so they're looking at discontinuing the tax exempt status. We can also look at our capital assets, and I, this is a really small flow chart, and it's done on purpose because this hasn't been adopted by the board. But the idea is, when we have a district asset or we have a a school that closes, what do we do with that asset? Does it have a future with the district? And so this is, would be a flow chart to go through and determine, do we hold on to this building? Do we hold on to the property? If we do, under what circumstances do we hold on to that? Or is it one that we would look to generate revenue off of, either through leasing the property or just an outright sale, declaring it surplus and and removing it from our inventory for a payment? So this strategy or this process hasn't been fully developed. And so we we have a real estate committee that goes through these, this exercise, and we ask these questions, but not necessarily by policy of the board. We go through and review and analyze and try to determine what's in the best interest of the district moving forward. But this could become more formalized, and it's like, hey, when this event happens, you now move through this set of questions and try to impact the district positively from our revenue standpoint.
I have a question, Todd. So this, you're saying this is used right now, not as policy, but would this be like when a school closes? Or tell me when you use this structure model?
So it, since I've come here, school closures have been the the pattern. And so immediately, there are questions, what are you going to do with that school now that you've closed it? Are you going to tear it down? Are you going to lease it to somebody? If you're going to lease it, can you do a zero-cost lease? Oh, we're interested in in purchasing that from you. What's, you know, what's your process for for purchasing the?
So this is what we use right now?
So, so right now, all those questions come in, and we navigate each one individually. There there's not a set policy for us to to work through. We assess each one on a case-by-case basis and try to come to what what's the best outcome for the district with this particular property.
Thank you.
So that's the the strategy that was primarily put in place for rebuilds, remodels. But we also have ongoing capital needs. This is, once we have a school building in place, when do we put the roof on it? When do we replace the roof? When is the HVAC system needing to be replaced? What do we do about concrete? What do we? So all of those things, once you have an asset, how do you maintain it and keep it going, also has a demand on these capital dollars. When we look at our capital budget, you'll see in the top section of the the table here for the years 2021 through 2025, the property tax is the primary funding source of our capital fund. And that's what the first three lines represent are the the monies coming in. Now, of the monies coming in, we actually have, let's look at the 2024 year, $50 million is committed to the page you go process. So that's money that comes in, and then we park it and and manage all of that side of the story. That leaves about $22 million for every other capital need in the district. That's how that revenue stream is is working. Off of that revenue of $22 million, again, looking at 24, we already have off-the-top allocations. We have IT commitments, we have department equip commitments, we have police department properties, school allocation, school. So there's, when you go through the list, there are things that we already do out of hand. These, these are costs that we have calculated, and they're built in. When you get to the end of that list, you look at the net remaining at the bottom of that column, there's about $9 million to take care of everything that's not on this list. That is not a lot of money for the number of properties that we have and the types of costs that we incur. So that's a challenge. We have, within the district, a process of assessing all of those demands and needs as they come forward, and it's been affectionately called the top 10. In every category of expense that we have, there are many projects, and there is a sorting and sifting and prioritization that takes place for all those projects. This is a snapshot from 2024 of all the the types of requests that have come in or the demands that we have for our school facilities in about 28 categories. So this is what you can expect to see. If you add all of that up, it's well in excess of $9 million. It's closer to 65 to 70 million dollars. So what happens is, we got nine, we have the need of 65 or 66, the rest gets deferred. It it will have to wait for another day till it becomes its own urgent need, and it rises up in the prioritization process. So we do have a gap in our ongoing capital needs as we move forward. We've, we focused on the rebuild, remodel side of the story, but it's come at an expense of not looking at the regular capital needs of the district. I just wanted to pull up the voter information pamphlet again, just to to call up that there is a commitment to revitalizing all of our schools in one fashion or another, as well as seismic and security upgrades. And so there's a commitment in there. We just don't have the funding at this moment to do that unless we look at the revenue stream that's being used for rebuild, remodel, and identify a portion of that that can be used for these types of projects. So in conclusion, we we have revenue, we have a revenue stream. It can carry the long-term plan that was put in place back in 2016, 2017, but we do have revenue needs because of the other capital projects the district is in need of taking care of. So with that, I'll slow down and and listen to comments.
There are comments, questions? Chris, you want to go first?
Sure. Thanks, Todd. That was really helpful. So I'm just looking at.
So I'm just looking at the board, well, first, on the FCI scores that our buildings have, did the earthquake change any of those scores in your opinion? Maybe Dawn can answer this. I know we, I know we fixed some of our schools with it, but it, did it structurally change maybe their score or not?
It did for one.
Not including the obvious, Wesley.
Yeah, I know. It, it's, it's such a great question. And without another analysis of every school, you can't with certainty at every school say that the FCI is the same. One of the major contributors that can either quickly increase or quickly decrease the FCI ranking is that of its structural integrity. You can make some assumptions that as each school involved in the earthquake had a structural engineer, thoroughly investigate and recommend any repairs, that through that insurance claim process and the repair process, we should have gotten pretty darn close and in some cases gotten better with the structure. We know at Eisenhower that through our improvements, we increased its, its structural integrity. That's a great example. It was near, you know, one of the, not the fault that slipped, but a, a subsequent fault and it felt the shake different. So if, if you would, if you would, I guess when it comes to what do you want to do next with an FCI, I, I would recommend that we engage in a complete second updated evaluation if we want to do anything radically different than the course we've set. I, I think it's important that major changes have good data to support those. But right now from the structural integrity from the earthquake, I think we're pretty darn close.
Okay, that was kind of why I asked the question is I wanted to know if this list is still pretty accurate in the FCI. Okay. And then my other question was just going over our board options. When we look at those different, you know, the closed schools, the new revenue, the lease, tell us maybe some direction on what as a board we should be looking at in a certain order? Or is there just something that maybe sticks out more than others to you, Todd? Maybe for, I'm just, maybe I'm getting your recommendation here.
The one slide I did not put on.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good. So, so I think there's, there's several approaches and it's probably a combination, like not one option is the silver bullet that will take care of things. But I think the, the first option of maintaining the schedule as we have it is, is worthy and that we should update that schedule. So looking at the timing, we should update it based on our new cost estimates as well as our revenue on hand and projections. I think we can revisit that list and say, can any of those projects move forward based on the available revenue? And so that alleviates some of the questions that, that like, is it working? Is, why is it taking so long? And, and there are reasons why, and there are now countervening reasons why we could move it forward. So I think it's worth that exercise to go sit down, reassess those project costs, match it up to the new revenue stream and reassess timing. There's that one. Akin to that is also looking at the, the fate of a closed school. What should we really do? Is it one, should it stay on the list? Should it come off the list? Should that property stay in the district possession? Should it not be in the district possession? So it's a combination of looking at timing. Again, that allows projects to move forward. If, if it's property that we don't see a future for within the district for the next 50 years, maybe it should be in surplus. Again, that's a bump. It helps a little bit of money. There's not a one to one when you sell a school and you have to build a school. It's not, it's not enough. It's, but it's something that might be worthy of review to see if it's enough money to, to bring to bear. The, the rest will probably have to do with how do we want to approach our regular capital needs? We, we have got the $22 million. That obviously is not enough money. Should we go forward in some tax strategy to address those? Again, cost management's necessary, but is that part of the formula? That as we go through truth and taxation, we have an element that captures a long-term strategy of getting out of our deferred maintenance and onto a reasonable schedule moving forward and not just be in urgent mode every year.
Thank you, Todd.
Just, just to follow up on one thing you said, I think, and, and I, we can definitely look at this, but what gets hard about reordering that order of that is, I think it was just Connie and I on the board when we went through this bond, is there was a big emphasis in listing with the county even, that this was going to be our order. And the voters voted on that because we were very public on this is our order. And so if we start moving the order of things, I think it's a little tricky, just something that we have to have. I don't mind looking at it or studying it per se, but for me, when we're making phone calls, asking for people to support this bond and this is our schools in this area and this is how it'll benefit you as a taxpayer. And to me, that's like a promise made to the taxpayer, we're going to stick to this order. So it gets a little tricky all of a sudden now that we've, you know, they voted for it, the bond passed. We're taking a huge more chunk, a big chunk out of, in addition on their property taxes. And then all of a sudden, I feel like we'd be jerking them around a little bit if we didn't stick to our words. So it does make me a little nervous to, as you say, bring projects forward that we can afford. I'm sitting there thinking, oh my goodness, if it's schools in mind that are being bumped down the list because others are moving forward, I don't know how I can go answer to the tax, my taxpayers and say, yeah, I'm okay with this. Because I wouldn't be okay with that.
I have a question, Karen. So what about like, so what if, I think, kind of in my head, I'm thinking, well, if there's closed schools on that list, moving those off the list, because right now they're taking up space to, in the project.
I'm not talking about removing, I'm talking about reordering.
Okay.
Yeah. And it may not be a reorder as in number one becomes number three, number six becomes number two. It, moving forward may be that the timeline shifts from.
Okay, thanks, because I thought you were saying, as you say, bringing projects up, I thought you were bumping other projects ahead of others or trading. That makes me nervous. It gives me a lot, that makes me pause. Yeah.
If I might, I think Todd's statements relate to the various models that he and I were running, looking at cost and cash flow. And so we've used the generalized statement often that we had to bump things seven years out. Now Todd showed a great visual of a historic slide that said five to seven. It's within that five to seven that there's some play. That, meaning, oh, we thought one school might be out four years, but the cash flow looks like, oh, really? It's only three years. It's in the same numerical order, but it just happened to, that, that our cash became available, that we can start it one year earlier than we thought we could because the forecasts are different than they were in, was this slide a 2019?
2019, 2020.
The crystal ball sometimes becomes more clear in the short term. And I think that's what you're articulating is, let's look at that cash flow model and respond accordingly to what revenues and expenditures.
So we're not talking about changing the actual order of projects. So if we have a rebuild at this elementary is listed five and another rebuild at a different elementary at number eight, eight would never surpass five?
That's not what I was suggesting. It is, it is a possibility, in the realm of possibility, that is a choice the board could make. And answering Chris's question, I was looking more at the cash flow story and can they come forward in time?
Okay, I'm just picturing people listening into this conversation, like they know exactly where they are in the rebuild list and they're asking me, I'm already seven years behind and now you're saying there's potential that I'm even going to be bumped further down.
So maybe more of a linear shift, not a, not going this way, so.
Except this, this shows it different. I mean, this shows that we're not, we're not going in that order. I like, which one is that?
Tell me which one you're talking about.
Plymouth has bumped back behind Arcadia a year, even though, is that, am I looking at the right lines? No.
Yeah, I think.
Taylor'sville High Edition is, is ahead of Arcadia, even though they were supposed to be the same year. So, and then we're bumping, what's the next one down? Orchard back, but starting, so does that, does that make sense? It looks like, looks like some of them are being bumped back. And I guess that's the concern that you're hearing is that.
This is, this is exactly what I'm getting at is, when you go out to a community and you're asking for 259 million? Is that what the bond was? Ben, anyway.
Two, two thirty-eight, twenty-five that we had.
Yeah, anyway, it was a huge chunk of change for the average, you know, home. And so this, like I said, it's just where I was on the board when this went through. I'm really particular to living up to the promise of what we said we would do. Even if it's delayed, I understand the delay, like I understand the money's not in the pot, but.
I guess they're the same year, so I don't know if that's like a technical.
As, as, as I've looked at the chart and, and have made similar observations, I've been corrected. There are a number of projects that are scheduled for the same year. How they show up on a list here is alphabetical order or something to that effect. So, so if they're all in the same year, they're, it's still all the same year. They may have shifted around a little bit in the same year. We can manage that.
For that clarification.
Well, I've asked the, the same question and that was the answer I got. Hopefully I'm still correct.
Clark, did you have any questions? Julie?
I guess I would just want to make sure, I'm trying to see some of these buildings. Well, I mean, we're just projecting them so far out. There's this concern about unreinforced masonry. Do we put ourselves at risk? Are any of these, do we have buildings that are so unsafe that we are? And I know that the word safety is nebulous, right? I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of looking at this and saying to myself, I'm actually okay being patient. But what I want to know is what am I risking if I decide to be patient?
Some of the patience is financial because we're, we're now playing the game of, will our interest earnings on reserves run faster than the escalating cost of construction? We got behind that in 2019, 2020 and we had to reassess our projects. The revenues just weren't, now we're in a different place. We're getting better returns on our revenues and the costs are not escalating as quickly. So, so we're, we're closing that gap a little bit. So, so there are fiscal reasons to, to determine to build sooner than later because you may not be able to earn enough interest to outrun the cost of construction. The others is, do we have the wherewithal? Do we have internal staff to be able to support projects? Is the construction beefed up enough to handle all the projects that we might bring to the table at any given time? So there are other constraints that we would pace ourselves so that we're not overtaxing ourselves or the construction place, which would then trigger cost escalation as they try to manage all of the projects that come to them. On the safety, I'm, I'm probably less versed in answering safety concerns. I think we try to, those safety issues get prioritized in our top 10 process. So we're keenly aware of those needs. But whether that requires a full rebuild of a building or not, I'm, I'm not well versed yet. I'll throw it over to you.
I wouldn't want the accountant asking, answering structural engineering questions. So, so you raise a very good point and we are, we articulated in the bond that is in the pay as you go model, there were allocations that would address seismic concerns. Todd has, has that and it, and it's, and it's circled. When you, when you start to break out subcategories of the pay as you go model, there are lines feeding these separate issues. And so the intent, so as not to project up 50 sublines in a budget, is to understand that we've rolled, we've rolled it up and Todd's presenting you the, the broader picture. We, we would want to continue to address the seismic, seismic improvements. I would say that when you really analyze what our unreinforced masonry buildings are, it's not as broad as the list the state had published. They actually just did a quick thing and said, oh, if it was built before this date, it's not reinforced. And we said, not true, we do have some of them. I would say that if you wanted to tackle all of the structural issues, you would be hard pressed to do that in any pay as you go model. You know, if, if, if you're worried about that being your, your number one risk and you want to hit it, there's a very, very large bond that would take place to encapsulate all of those changes. So as Todd says, what's the risk? You try and tackle those that are in worse condition, and again, the worst first. And as I mentioned in the FCI score, the structural integrity of a building is heavily weighted in that FCI. So we are in fact doing what we can to address those as well as when you're remodeling a facility, you look to do some structural upgrades, you look to make some changes. Even when we do a roofing project, we do seismic improvements to the building as we tie everything together with the roofing membrane and, and that structure. And so we're, we are addressing as best we can. But if you just wanted to hit, and I, and I remember, I guess I'm old enough now to, to use that phrase. I recall when Salt Lake District decided they were going to do seismic improvements in all of their buildings and they put out a bond and it was substantial, even back in quote unquote the day. And I just don't know if that's programmatically feasible from a financial standpoint. And as Todd said, from internal labor resources, can we manage all of that? No. Can the construction industry continue to throw people at this? No, the trades are shrinking. So I, you know, and then thus if the resources aren't there, the costs go up. So you're fighting a lot of things when you just tackle one issue.
Okay.
Was that helpful? I did it?
Yeah, and I'm wondering, based on that, is there like, do we have some sort of escalated insurance cost based on the condition of some of our buildings?
The, so we're covered by risk management for our facilities.
Okay.
And they go through their actuarial study. They take the age of our building, the construction materials of the building, and they put an assessment based on those calculations and their actuarial work. So technically, yes. And they take that into account as far as they go.
The other costs that we are, you know, I guess incurring from that is, I would assume that our older buildings are more expensive in terms of the HVAC is not efficient or the windows aren't efficient. I mean, all of those kinds of things, right? So those older buildings, the utilities seem like they would cost more.
No, it, it's, it's true that the, the maintenance and operation cost per square foot, square, square foot of an older building are, are definitely higher. And then you would say amortize the cost of whatever the next improvement is. And so often our mechanical engineers do that and they, they opine to us, hey, this is the extent that you want to go to financially.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense now that you put it like that. Our president, I have two more questions. Shall I continue? Do you want to go? Okay. I wonder if, I guess I'm looking mostly at John and Mitch. Are there academic risks? Are there ways that this is interrupting our kids' ability to learn in these buildings? Dawn, I will also allow it.
Thank you. We actually conducted a couple of investigations into that very thing. So along with the FCI score at the time, we had what we called an educational adequacy index. We wanted to understand what our buildings had or needed that impacted student performance. And in addition to that, back when Dr. Rob Avrat was here, we asked him to take that educational adequacy index and study that in comparison with, at that time, Sage scores. And we did not have a direct positive correlation. And so while we are concerned about issues such as something as simple as maybe a hard surface flooring in a classroom gives more echo and reverberation compared to a carpeted classroom. It's true, it does. Do students feel better in, in the classroom that doesn't have the echo? They do. Has it substantially impacted? Has it substantially impacted their, their, their test results? It has not. And so there are many things that we will want to do for the comfort of a student, for the comfort of a faculty, but we just couldn't see a direct correlation to those. And as a matter of fact, most studies that I've seen on this issue struggle mightily to get something that's statistically significant. They admit that maybe stress levels and et cetera drop down. But when it comes to an actual test score, we're not seeing it.
So it's not, we don't have any information to show that it's impacting achievement, but we do suspect that it's impacting mental health.
I wouldn't say that, maybe comfort? You know, when you're in a space for eight hours a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, softer is nicer.
But I'm thinking about like, I'm thinking about one of my schools and being there for eight hours a day and another one of my schools and being there for eight hours a day. I think it would feel different to me and my life.
I, I hear you and I agree that specifically our schools that were designed and built in the energy conservation side, that, that seventies and eighties building.
And like when you had no natural light.
Yeah, the same dark hallway, dimly lit, going into the same classroom. Absolutely. Those are the type of improvements that lighting upgrades, maybe a better color selection on the carpet, or, or, or. Those make an absolute feel better discussion and, and we do those as much as possible. But again, an interesting example, internally, if we have staff hours and even offer overtime, we can typically do a lighting upgrade in an elementary school to nice LED, about $60,000. I contract that out, it's a quarter of a million dollars.
Wow.
And, and, and understand that the state also puts limits on how much I can expend in internal resources before I have to contract it out. I hit a hundred thousand and suddenly, oh no, you can't do that. You have to bid that out to private corporations. And so we're extremely limited in what we can do. And from a resourcing perspective, I can knock out maybe two elementaries a year in lighting upgrades before, you know, I fail to then do standardized work orders.
That would be an interesting law to see if we can get some lawmakers to look at because that forces us to not be able to take advantage of the term that I always forget about, about quantity. You have a lot of quantity and so you can pay less. Thanks. Economies of scale, yeah. Okay, my last question was Todd. So how does the safety bill and the need to fund that, does that impact this in any way?
It absolutely does. And I think we're still trying to get our arms around what those total costs are as the specs come out for what's required for the ballistics film on the windows and what the pendants will, will be required to do, et cetera, et cetera. We, we can, we have outside estimates on what we understand the language to be in the bill, but that's being refined. But it will definitely have cost impact. There are state dollars that are available to offset some of that, but it won't offset all of it. So those are, those will be days where we have to sit down and have a hard discussion of what will it take to implement all of those legislative expectations.
I mean, my, just, can you set my expectations? I feel like that's going to have a significant impact on this plan.
It, it could take, for a time period, it could slow down some of the projects. It could be in excess of $50 million, yes.
I mean, my initial reaction is, well, we can't even begin to make adjustments to this plan until we understand what we're going to need to do for that because we'll have to make adjustments and then we'll just have to make adjustments again. Am I right?
Yep.
I'm, do we, we don't have any sense of when we're going to know what, what is the final, what the final deal is, right? I mean, we won't necessarily even know it this year, will we?
I, it would be nice. I, I don't know if Superintendent has a better feel for that, but I know the discussions are ongoing and the security chief for the state is going through the process of putting the specs together. I, I could not speak to timeline at this point. I'm not even aware of requests for additional money outside of the governor's budget to fund safety.
I mean, I would love to do the things that we can do within our control that can help us to get our act together here. But I wouldn't want to do anything significant until we understood the impacts of that bill personally.
That would be my recommendation as well as obviously. If the board had a desire to amend this plan or make any sort of adjustments, then it would be my suggestion and recommendation that we go through another community input process and explain the circumstances of the recent economic challenges and construction market that have caused these delays and get their input in terms of changing the list or adjusting it, removing certain schools that have been closed, et cetera, et cetera, before we draw any sort of conclusions. And we would want to take some time to do that. I could see several community meetings, some other pieces of that. We could come back with some, some ideas or thoughts on that. But regardless, I wouldn't want to take any sort of action until post-legislative session.
Sorry, I, I also, this is the first time that I've said to myself, you know, community meetings would be a really great idea as we discuss how we want to handle the Guardian to get feedback from our constituents, what, how do you want that to look in your school? You know, are you willing to pay for that? You know, I mean, I think we should ask them that because I, I think I know that what I support, but I'm kind of guessing at what my constituents support.
Kim? Tom, is it possible to, is there any documentation you can share just regarding the studies you mentioned? I'd be very interested in seeing.
I'm trying to think if I had anything but an email from Dr. Avrat. I remember the discussion with him. I don't recall documentation with that. But when it comes to the educational adequacy score and the FCI's, we can run reports on those. Those exist. I just, I, I'm sorry, I don't think I have a study from Dr. Avrat. I, I will, I will search back and if I have it, that would be great. I just have a gut feeling I, I don't.
If you can, take a look though.
Happy to look, absolutely.
I don't have any other questions. I think questions have been asked, but just wanted to give my comments that I, I do think we should be looking at all those options that we have on the list. Personally, I, I think some changes need to be made. Liquidation should be on the, well, everything should be on the table, just in my opinion. So I don't have any other questions though, just wanted to share that.
Connie, did you have anything? Right. So back on the list, at the beginning, I think, the one with the red, the pretty red. I just noticed Cypress wasn't on there, so why was Cypress not on the FCI? The FCI, the, the other, the next one before the?
Oh, the FCI.
Yeah, that one. Why is Cypress not on there?
It's number 26 on the right-hand side. Its FCI is not, it, the, the wing is not on there as part of a building being decrepit.
Cypress.
Oh, Cypress.
My question was Cypress.
Cypress's facility at the time, as I recall, between the two buildings was considered to be higher up. And we looked at Skyline and Cypress based on the security concerns that we had at the time. And the board concluded that they should be part of kind of the foothold of the, the bond initiative.
I think we're, we're also forgetting that Cypress was the combined campus of Brock Bank and, and Cypress. And when you added the two together, there was a decrease and so it actually averaged out and, and might, might not just be on the screenshots that Todd has. Again, the origin of the screenshot depends upon where it's at. But Cypress, when you, when you looked at Cypress as a whole, again, Cypress might even come in, I'm trying to look just quickly.
Well, number nine right there is Brock Bank, which is part of Cypress campus.
Yeah, it's, it's part of it and then Cypress probably came in. As you looked at the multiple buildings, like a nice 1930s gym and a this and a that and.
A hundred-year-old pool. I just wondered why, like where that happened and that's, that's fine. I'm not questioning that we did Cypress. I just, I know somebody's going to look at that list and say, well, why'd you guys do Cypress when it's not even on there and Skyline's in phase two and anyway, so.
There were conversations at the time as well that in order to bond and to market a bond, we, you have to have some key projects that a community can get behind. And that the Skyline and Cypress were both overdue projects and there were other factors beyond just their facility conditions such as 121 separate entrances at Cypress that caused safe, significant safety issues, 72 at Skyline, the constant flooding and waterfall off the stage at Skyline and the water tanks. There were other issues beyond just the FCI that drove, helped us conclude that we needed some kind of keynote projects to kind of banner, carry the banner for, to get the communities behind those projects. We did the same thing with Olympus and Granger in 2009 as well. We had air conditioning for every school, but we had these two larger projects that the community as a whole could get behind. And, and I will frankly, despite the fact that their FCI may not be as high, rebuilding high schools, those are our most used facilities and they are our largest community centers and they have the biggest impact on our communities. And if we were to pursue a bond at some point in time, it would be appropriate to look at what high school facilities could be enhanced, remodeled, rebuilt as part of a, a bond package at that point in time for the same strategy and approach. I, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to hide behind the strategy, which is if you want to get people to support a tax increase for a bond, you have to give them something that is tangible and that unfortunately just having West Kern's Elementary on there is going to be impactful to that particular small, small community with two or 300 parents, but not to a community as a whole.
And Ben, I can't reiterate, this, this is a decision the board did not take lightly when we decided to go for that huge bond. We talked about it for probably two years. There were, I don't know how many community meetings, kind of going and talking about the need. And even with the literature, we were out there talking. And so this was not just some willy-nilly decision to kind of have the pay-as-you-go. We knew the debt would have to be moved around. We knew, we knew all of those ramifications and, and the board worked hard and our communications team worked hard. It was a lot of work because it is really, really hard to get a bond to pass. And I would even dare say it's even harder now than it was in 2017 just with inflationary costs and people are living real close to, you know, they're just paycheck to paycheck. So to ask people to vote to pay more taxes was a, we knew and we carried that burden on our shoulders because it was, it was a tall order and it was a hard ask to make. But I just want to make sure the board understands that it was a heavy lift and it was a lot of homework. We didn't just take that decision lightly.
And I'm, I'm not questioning it, I just wanted, I just wondered where like, where that was.
No, that wasn't targeted to you. I'm just saying as a whole, just as, you know, just as we talk about the ins and outs and moving taxes around, we knew that was coming. We, you know, and that was all part of it, but.
Could I speak to that a little bit further too? In terms of if, if you just, it's, it was really hard. When I first got hired in 2008, the board six months later gave me 80 days to pass a bond and we barely got, I think, 56%. And I never wanted to do that ever again. That was really extremely difficult. Salt Lake just did that and it was, I think, a $790 million bond, which was, is the largest in state history, I want to say. But it's also important to realize that just a few years ago Alpine tried to pass a half a billion dollar bond or Jordan, I can't remember which, and that went down, right? So you have a more supportive community in Salt Lake City with raising their taxes towards educational facilities. But look at the Christmas tree that, there's a Christmas tree approach is the strategy that they utilized. Everybody gets a little bit of something, right? They all get to put their ornament on the tree. So all the high schools are getting field houses and, you know, two of the high schools are being completely rebuilt. So Davis has taken a comparable approach with their bonds over the, the last few years to kind of mix in some projects across the entirety of the district. So everybody gets a little bit of something and there's a lot more buy-in from the community. So those are all conversations we want to have. When we approached the bond in 2016, before we did anything, we took all these strategies out and did a six-month community engagement process. We're pretty good at community engagement in this district. It's kind of our, our hallmark, whether it's school closure or other, or the processes and procedures. We generally do a pretty good job when we can of trying to engage our community. And I, I can imagine something comparable as well. I, I really wouldn't feel comfortable just trying to roll the dice and go for it in a 90-day period, although other districts have been successful with that.
And I want to say that I, I feel like I really appreciate our former board. I think that this plan is a really good one. And, and I think that while we've had to extend it out, I think that it seems like it's working and that that's okay. My only real concern is, and when I ask, well, what are we risking? You know, I don't think we could have lasted another 10 years at Cypress or at Skyline. And like those buildings could not have lasted. I, I would say even we were maybe in a couple of years too long in both of those buildings. So I guess I'm asked, I'm kind of saying to myself, well, are there other buildings that are in that scenario where now we're going to be in them five years too long because of this? And if so, do we want to really look at those? And so the, I would like to know if there are those buildings because I don't want that to happen and I just didn't know. I would like to be able to make an informed decision where, when it comes to those kinds of facilities.
I'll go ahead and express some opinions here. I think a couple of our junior highs are in that place. And a couple of them are on this list, such as Kern's Junior, Brock Bank, Evergreen and Valley are all facilities that, that are. You, you talk about Skyline and Cypress not being, they would not withstand the scrutiny of the security needs that we have today. While a lot of our schools like Hunter High, which are still not brand new, they still fare much better in terms of being able to provide some sort of security upgrades and modifications for the needs that we have today. And it's so crazy in just a short period of time how different and changing that environment is and what those needs continue to be. I also have concerns about the broad-based, stretched-out campus at Cottonwood and at Kern's. So good bones by and large, I would say, but there's some remodeling or some safety issues given the, the threats that we're faced with on a daily basis that, that keep me up at night.
You know, I was the assistant principal at Granite High School. It's last year was a comprehensive high school. And I remember somebody walked through, some prominent person, I can't remember who it was at the time, and they said, "This is not fair. This building is so bad, why do these kids have to go here?" I don't know if it has any real impact on learning, but the overall experience isn't awesome compared to somebody else. And I share what Ben said about those junior highs. I, I also was an intern at Kern's Junior High and it's, it's not as good as some other junior highs. That's for sure.
So I, the reason why I just, I, I asked that, I, looking on the list, it's slide 13. I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of my community. I'm just, I'm sharing this with you. Taylorsville is very concerned. You notice that the next ones on the list, Calvin Smith, a large portion of them, Calvin Smith Plymouth Arcadia and the Taylorsville High Edition are the next ones, are some of the next ones to go. And they're the ones that are being put off. My community has expressed a great deal of frustration that we've had, you know, rebuilds or remodels all the way across the district except for Taylorsville. So they're very frustrated with this and the fact that it's going to take an extra five to seven years to even get started, which means that we have kids in a villa that we lovingly refer to it as for 10 years. And that's, you know, to many a huge concern. It's a safety concern, it's a. It's a safety concern, it's a, you know, facility concern. The bathrooms there are much nicer, actually, I'll just admit that. But I'm, I'm expressing that because it does concern me that, you know, we, we do need to look at something, I feel like, and, and, you know, that list, as Kim said, you know, I, I think we do need to look and see where, where we can move some of this up because these communities also voted for this bond and are now being put off. You know, five to, I don't think my kid will say, I don't think any of my kids will be there when we do this with, with any of these schools, which is frustrating to a lot of, a lot of parents. I want to switch down just because I personally asked for this at the end of this presentation. Todd, I appreciate you putting this together and, and on with the capital projects and the 10, top 10 categories and our deferred maintenance. I just want to point this out. We have, you know, a shortfall of $58 million and that's on just maintenance alone. And we have $9 million-ish, depending on the year, to do this with. And to me, this is also not acceptable. While we're putting off these projects five to seven years, can we look at this and maybe, I mean, we've not given a, an increase to our capital projects, to our capital fund for years, for, how long did you say, Dawn, 15 years?
Sorry, I had the red light there. It would be at least 15 years. My predecessor, Dave Corley, was working with the exact same $22 million that I am.
So that to me is frustrating. When we've had inflation, when we've had, you know, cost increase, when we have things. I just, I look at some of these things, lighting, I've heard of, maybe I shouldn't share this. I've heard of, because they can't get lights for auditoriums, they are buying old lights from other places and then they are cutting the wires and they are rewiring it right there so that they can put it in. It's just, this is, this is what we're looking at. The teachers are patching things together in order to get things to work and I really want us to look at this. And I know that, that that means it's some sort of an increase in our, our budget and maybe that is something that we look at those other, those other areas. But we've got to do something about this deferred maintenance because it's quite frankly frustrating for a lot of schools. It's frustrating to me to go into these schools. I know one of the elementaries, they've been waiting on this new sound system. It's terrible. Their sound system is terrible and they've been waiting on it for years. We need to be able to do these things. And I just want to put that bug in your ear because I feel like that's, this is, as much as you say it doesn't affect test scores, it does affect what kids we have in our school. Our kids aren't going to come if we have old buildings that don't have the, you know, the latest and greatest. They're going to be attracted to other places, which is money and which is also being able to put that towards, you know, graduation tests, all of that stuff. I think it is, and as somebody who taught in a room without windows for 11 years, it can be very, it can be a mental health issue as well and a retention of teachers. So I think it does, as much as, as much as you look at that and say, well, this doesn't have anything to do with our strategic plan, I'm just offering, I think it does have a lot to do with our strategic plan and it's worth investing this in our kids and in our, our programs and in our schools, so.
Hey Nicole, I'm glad you brought this up because, I mean, I was focused so much on this other thing. I don't think that I was really paying attention to this as much as I should. Are you proposing then that we, in our, the revenues that we already receive, increase the capital budget for our next year? Is that what you are suggesting we should do? You're not saying, let's go out and get more revenue to pay for this. You're saying, let's allocate more.
Some, well, I don't know.
You're saying, let's solve the problem.
We're going to have to solve the problem somehow. I don't know how that's going to be solved. I think it needs to be something that we start to build in, that we automatically increase this budget every time, you know, an inflationary cost year to year. And if that means, you know, it's a small bump somewhere else, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is. I'm not suggesting that part, that's something that we have to talk about. But, you know, fencing, that's part of our security as well. Fire alarm, the fact that we have fire alarm requests, that's a safety issue. Staging and rigging curtains, I know a teacher who said that the, the stage curtain fell when she was on stage and had she been, you know, three feet back further, that could have knocked her out completely. And, you know, I, this is not just, it's not just the nice things. This is some, some of this stuff on here is safety to me as well. So I, I want us to look at this budget and figure out how we can make an improvement on what we're giving so that we can start to tackle some of this because it's not acceptable to me. This is not okay.
Hey. Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong. I, I mean, I've been with the district 16-plus years. We had a billion dollar, a billion dollar deferred maintenance challenge and difficulty prior to the 2017 bond and we still have a billion dollar because of cost inflation. Despite all the progress that we've made and the projects that we've completed, that, that amount has not disappeared. I think the bigger frustration for me personally along this front is that despite the data that shows that our schools are competing quite well against some of our charter counterparts, people like new and shiny things. And those new facilities are attracting people away from our schools, which in turn costs us revenue and those economies of scales, which benefit our, our, our local schools with the number of students that we're losing. So I, this is just a basic market, free market concept and approach. And if we're expected to compete above and beyond the facility condition, when you're looking at a almost 80-year-old building and looking across the street to some of these newer facilities that are built by charter schools, for some of it has nothing to do with quality of educational outcomes. It has everything to do with where I feel safe sending my kids.
Well, or they have a really cool steam lab or, you know, they have a great stage where they can do a production whereas we don't, so.
Very shiny, shiny, shiny.
Or they have cool field houses.
That too. Anyway, that's just, thank you for listening. That's my, that's my plea is that we look at this as we come to our budget and make this a priority, make this something that we actually look at and build it in and make it be something that we do year after year, not just increase it one time, but make this as something that, okay, we need to be looking at this and increasing it as, as we do, you know, for any other budget that, that has an inflationary cost to it. So that's all for me. Any other thoughts, concerns, questions? All right. I think we are done then. So I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.